I'm sitting right here.
You want to sit here?
Okay.
You want to sit next to your mom? Okay, sorry. Curriculum.
Where everybody wants to be, huh?
Yes, all curriculum.
What is it?
Can I sit here?
Yeah, they're gonna...
So I brought the clipboard that they need.
She's back there, she's... Listen, they didn't tell me that you have their head today.
Her, her family.
No, her husband.
Yeah.
He's already...
I guess the first one on the agenda would be the basic fitness, which is a HAC course, which is a dual enrollment course for high school students. The teacher, in order for us to qualify for a HAC course to run in the high school, the teacher has to go through an approval process with HAC, which has already happened. And then what we do is, we offer the HAC curriculum inside our classroom and inside our space. There's also a textbook that goes along with that course, which is here if you want to take a look at it. But the textbook goes along with the curriculum, which is all driven by HAC specifically, in order for us to get that curriculum. The Intro to Ag 6 is a course that dates back to the before-school meeting that occurred, where we agreed that that was going to be one of the courses moving forward, and now that's presented for us. The US government is a revised course in order for our students to gain the possibility, and help me with the wording here, in order to gain the possibility of getting AP credit. It's an advanced course written based on the AP curriculum, but it's not specifically an AP course, so that...
They can take the AP credit.
Correct. And then...
They can take it.
They can take it, yes. And then the final one would be the Consumer Math, which we had lengthy discussion about in a previous board meeting, and this is the revised version, to get us through this year with the thought that perhaps it'll be looked at in the future. With that being said, I just want to remind the committee that, as a district, we're looking at mathematics K through 12, and that process started this week, where we brought the IU math representative out, and he started working in elementary, looking at grades K through five, and they're a focus group, a math curriculum committee working in those areas. His plan is to be later in the year analyzing the high school course progression and then coming back with recommendations. So Consumer Math is to get us through to the end of this year, possibly into the future.
So, just to make sure that I'm clear, are these up for discussion for, okay, tentative adoption? Oh, sorry, I did not see that. So tentative adoption means...
The curriculum process at Northern Lebanon takes two months for board approval. First month is tentative adoption, so it's a positive vote from everybody, and then it sits in tentative state for the month, and then the final adoption happens in the second month. That's just a routine procedure for us, is how we've done it since I've been here. It's the two-month process.
I have a unique question with the Intro to Ag that probably should be sent to your master teacher. Could I get kind of an impact, or could we get like an impact statement on how that's affected the other Ag classes in regards to the greeting of the bunnies, the discussions that are now being had with the sixth graders being involved? I just had some parents and students kind of bring those up, and just to find out if that's been an issue at all.
So the question is whether or not having Ag 6 has impacted other Ag courses?
Yes, how the other Ag courses change. I mean, I know that they've changed, but if we could get a, like, more of a specific or suggest area of the parents would be...
Any other questions?
So I, I have some questions. The Intro to Ag is currently being offered, right?
It's currently running, that is correct.
And there's been no approval of that?
That's correct. This, this came out of an agreement with the board that occurred before the school year started.
Okay.
So this is kind of a catch-up to an agreement that we had in place...
Okay.
...to start the year.
And Intro to Ag is offered to sixth graders only?
Correct. Well, this particular course, that's correct.
Intro to Ag 6?
Yes, there's another Ag course that's a prerequisite to all other Ag courses, so, which is like an intro course, so I don't want there to be confusion at all, but this particular one is for sixth graders.
Are sixth graders allowed to participate in FFA events?
Sixth graders are not. It starts at seventh grade, seventh grade, and then what happens is anybody that's enrolled seven through 12, we're a mandatory FFA state, which means if you're enrolled in an Ag course, seven through 12, we have to pay for your membership to be part of FFA, so just a little background.
So anybody in that Intro to Ag center, I'd rather that.
Correct.
Okay. So I noticed that the Intro to Ag class is a nine-week class. How does that fit in to student schedule, and what do they do for the other, the rest?
It fits into what you would typically consider as like a unified rotation, elective rotation, off the top of my head, music, art, music, art, computers, not in this particular rotation.
Any consumer side?
Facts.
Course.
Music.
No, not in that rotation.
Well, because that is in one of the rotations.
So are all of the facts, the arts, the music, are they all not your long courses?
No, they're nine-week courses. These are, these are exploratory courses, so you think about what a student gets in elementary school, and it's kind of the same mentality in sixth grade, that you're getting a location of the course, you're not getting... So it, it happens that they change in marking period, so that each sixth grader right now, twice a day, has a special, first period and seventh period. There's eight total.
And so they get a whole credit for the course, right?
In middle school, credits don't really transfer. Credits only really start to count when you're starting to take high school courses.
Okay, so this doesn't count toward graduation?
Okay, no, this is not a graduation requirement, nor does it count toward overall credits for graduation.
Okay, and this is not taking the place of what the science?
No.
Two-ish questions, sorry. Hoping that you're here, you can just answer this, which has nothing to do with these three actually, so I'll try to get off of it quick. Did we remove facts as a requirement in middle school? Was it ever, wasn't it a requirement? Now is more of an elective option, or is it still a requirement in middle school that students have to keep?
It's a requirement in sixth grade. Seventh grade and eighth grade became an optional.
When did that happen? This year? For me, make a note to put that on a discussion at further date, since it's not into this topic, I don't want to pull away from these, but I, I look at Consumer Math, and I look at the fact that, did we, did we purchase books for Consumer Math? So you purchased books?
Yes.
So books were purchased? So if it's a temporary one-year class, it will, at least, it was, when we discussed it, that's how the board was looking, and I know you have hopes that it would continue. I'm not totally positive, but I'm almost positive. I always purchase books. I'll look into that.
I don't think that there is a book listed.
No, I'm saying from beyond, when it was first discussed, and, and I'm looking, well, I'm also looking at basic fitness. Are we purchasing those books?
Basic fitness is an interesting case because we're doing a HAC course, and so what typically happens in a HAC situation is students are responsible for tuition slash books.
Okay.
So it doesn't necessarily come out of taxpayers' pocket. There's been a history of the foundation, the HAC foundation, supporting some component of that expense, not always 100 percent, and I'm not sure what the rate of reimbursement is. This year, I don't know about that at all.
So for the teacher's book as well, would that be...
Would, would the teacher book be...
Which is probably like point of office.
I think that's what we catch.
We should be able to get it from the publisher.
I just don't want us to purchase books or items for courses that, at this point, the board has openly discussed being like a trial run year. I don't know if that's something that we can do, maybe an online printout, and it can be, I mean, I know we have math classes that we don't have physical courses for, and these are classes we have to teach kids, so purchasing books for a maybe class, I find kind of concerning, concerning regardless if it's $5 or $50. So if I could just get confirmation on purchase books for the Consumer Math and the price of those, maybe for future, that would be good to have, as well as, I think, right now, we have one teacher that can do the basic fitness for HAC, who will not be here next year, if I'm correct, so are we running this also as a one-year program?
Traditionally, when we lose a HAC approved teacher, we try to find someone else in the department that needs the qualifications. What's interesting, and you probably speak to this, each department has different criteria of what it takes to be an approved instructor for them, and so I, I don't recall off the top of my head specifically what the PE requirement was. Most of the departments, it's a minimum of a masters within a specific subject area, which becomes a problem for us, because a lot of secondary educators go after a general education masters, not a specific subject area master, so it creates a little bit of a challenge, but I, I, we are anticipating that person to be, and just kind of trying to fill that, which, that being said, we'll also have to fill that as a possibility.
I get that. I think that's why I was concerned to see this, because I do know that we had discussed having our, our PE department was already thin, and we, you know, were struggling with stuff from the beginning of the year, so to introduce this, I was just, it seemed slightly concerning, but I know it's already been running. I would just maybe, like, hope in the future, anything that we pull in from HAC, maybe, like, I'm not saying that, you know, college credits are a bad thing in high school, I think it's great, I think it's wonderful, I just think that we really need to have such a solid follow-through, that we guarantee there's always a second person to take over that, or that we at least have to, or somebody lined up the moment we sign up for it, not the moment we lose the person, because anything can happen to that person, and then what happens to the students that already signed up. So I just think maybe that's something, as we're doing our curriculum prep, would be nice to see moving forward. I mean, I mean, basic fitness isn't as huge of a...
It's a good point. The only thing I'll push back is that the teacher approval process is not necessarily a quick process. It is as if you're going through the interview process specifically for HAC. It's fairly involved, so I appreciate what you're saying, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the most efficient way to operate.
I think with basic fitness, I wouldn't be as concerned as I would be any other, like, a regular course that we're coming in. That's something I think that we should put the extensive time into ensuring that we can continue that for the kids, because you don't want to lose out on that, so that would be, I would just find some way to maybe have a team together before we approach HAC, I don't know, it just seems kind of rough.
One thing that can happen, is students can come to campus to take the classes, but I have a number of high school students in my classes. I don't know how that affects the high schools financially.
It's the difference between dual enrollment in college and the high school.
Right.
And so, and we have both students, sets of students here, and so if they're taking a dual-enrolled course, they can do it online from here, or they can go to HAC and take the course, and what we're referring to with this basic fitness is a college and a high school.
Right.
So that's where you qualify your own teachers to do it, and that's, you know, there's no difference in the cost of the credit in, in either case.
I ju, I wasn't sure if the school district potentially loses money when the student goes and takes the class physically on campus. There's no concern if they're not taking as many classes here?
Loses the money.
Whatever money that, that the school would receive for students coming here, because they're spending less time here if they're coming to campus. Do you know what I mean?
I, I, I get what you're saying.
Just to make sure there's no penalty for students when they leave here to take the class on campus.
Are you saying that we're marking that, like, are they getting marked absent, and so therefore we're losing their enrollment?
No, no. What I'm saying is, there is, if we can't find qualified teachers that are HAC certified, another option for them is to come to campus...
Right.
...to take the class, and I was not sure if there is, if the school district takes a monetary hit when the students, say, are not here for half the day because they're on campus half the day.
Like a discount.
Yes, yeah.
That's federal money.
That's where I was going with this, that's why I said that.
So, so do they?
I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you. There were two thoughts that I had. One, I, I think the onsite retention is higher than what we pay, but I'm not positive of that, and then the other piece is what you're referring to, is the federal reimbursement dollars for actual time, and that, I, I don't, I don't think it does, because you're still a high school student, taking a college course.
So there's no, no problem with encouraging students to, to do that?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, as far as, it's allocated on twoman enrollment, not presenting the time, or something like that.
So maybe if we can't find HAC enrolled students, and we want to open more doors, we can encourage them.
Creates another dilemma, you got transportation time, and then, you know, we're so far out of town, but, so it creates a scheduling issue.
So they're taking the online class?
They are. They're not getting the benefit of the instructor, but they're getting the benefit of the, the HAC course. I don't think we have anyone right now going to HAC.
Okay.
I think everyone is here.
I just wanted to make it clear, I am pro-HAC credits. I just want to make sure moving forward that we have that kind of solid. That's, I know it's difficult, I have no, I mean, I don't mind you even sitting down telling me, like, this is the process that it goes, and I can be like, oh, yeah, that's crazy, so what's the other options that we have, like that option? I just want to have an A and then a B. I mean, this, this was a unique situation, because the same teacher who certified went up, is going on a semester, so let's make all these changes to take her from here to here, and then she's gone the next year, so it's kind of, if we're going to continue it, let's have, make sure we can consider that, so that would be, and not in a department that's already tight. I think that's the other problem.
Any other questions in regard to these four courses and tentative adoption?
How many courses are we going to add this year? Seems like there's four, six every month.
Well, these four are, have already been approved, or have already been started, so I don't know that we've been adding any.
Oh, okay.
When, when did the board approve these? Because I remember two different board meetings where the board yelled at the administrator for enrolling students in courses that were not approved. So, and I heard that there was a okay from the board mentioned, but I didn't see anything publicly on that.
No, it was publicly. I voted no. I mean, I voted no for, I know at least two of these, but there was a majority vote to approve them. There's like four, it's voted four times, so if you go back in the meeting minutes for each of the agendas, you're going to see each of these kind of coming up, and they were already rolling. There were ones that weren't approved or taken off, and I think, I wouldn't say yelling at, I think the directive from the board was, any new courses have to go through a process before even making it to the agenda, so that the community doesn't see that confusion, and see this class thinking this class is starting, and then it's not starting, or it is starting, and we never saw it. So I do know that we've kind of batten that down, but in the meeting minutes, you'll see those.
Or started with no books or anything?
Some of these weren't even put through the curriculum process, and they're not approved through the state either. Like, this is, this is what they're talking about. They're talking about the fact that we continue to add more classes, while I understand that students are enrolled in those classes, but we put the cart before the horse, because we guys went and did whatever we wanted to do with the campus model without it being approved, and you put all of these classes and all of these kids into classes that aren't even approved. They, they're not approved by the state. There's nothing approved by them. They, they didn't finish the process before you put people in there, on both sides of the fence.
Mr. Skogen, are these curriculums, because I know the night it was voted on, they had curriculums attached to them, maybe it wasn't public.
Curriculum process, there was a lot of cart before the horse.
Yes.
We're resolving issues that happened in the past, I'm going to say that again. What we're doing is trying to correct what had happened, and we have a process going forward, which will be introduced and be part of this committee discussion going forward, starting in January. There'll be a curriculum council in place, course approval in place, how we get curriculum approved, so we don't have what occurred with a couple of courses here that were, were rectified situations.
Why don't we start it now instead of January?
That's correct.
Well, these do have curriculum, which is why I'm saying you can't do anything about the before.
But that's like saying you can't have no cookies after dinner, but you can before. It don't make no sense.
All the curriculums and everything put into place for the new things to come, and it's going to be sent to state by July 31st of the following year, to make sure that all of the processes and everything for the state is followed accurately, because we have not done that in the last year or two years. I'm asking that you're going to follow the requirements, and it's going to be put into, as of July 1st of this year, anything that you guys have put in has been pushed through to the state, and it's all been approved by the state, so that it can go on to the course selection for next year.
Everything we do is going to be followed by PDA, right, some process, correct?
Why wait till January? Why don't you start now? I mean...
They're, they're saying that they have put everything through from now on, as of, it was put in as of July 1st, but so the new stuff that comes out now that comes through this board, and everything else has followed proper protocol and procedure, that's what they're saying.
How these been flipped through the PDA now, evenly?
Before this course existed, what, so I know that Algebra I and Geometry were our pre-reps. Before there was Consumer Math, where did they go next?
It all went to Algebra II.
Okay.
Is this a half credit, like you guys?
It's a square, it's a half and a half, so it'll be one, it should be half in the half in the fall, half in the spring, so which now?
So it's two separate courses?
Is it listed as two?
We'll, we'll make corrections in January.
Is it the same course, because you have...
Guys, wait a couple of conversations, please.
To clarify, the document that is before you is rewritten to be one credit under the same title, which is, it's not the half that you, it, it, at one time, we talked about it being Consumer Math A, Consumer Math B, or some combination that, instead of taking that approach, it's completely redone, to be one.
We took the feedback from the board, that it was, that it needed to be more rigorous than taught in.
But it's a credit?
No, so you just smacked the board. It was a, it was a one, it was a one-credit course. It was changed to a 0.5-credit course in September, and it was rewritten to the one-credit course that the components...
So will students be receiving a half-credit or a full-credit?
Well, after this would get approved, presumably, if this would be approved...
She just said it would.
My understanding.
So they're beginning with 0.5?
No, it's just one.
So why have these two separate courses?
It's set up to be one.
Yes.
Doesn't make sense.
Okay. I think I don't unders, I guess I don't understand that part, though, because if we could reach what we needed with the 0.5 to 0.5 by adding rigor, but still keeping it 0.5, 0.5, why it was changed to one-credit, and the changes were made? I guess that's the part I don't understand, because the board directive was to split it, because we weren't comfortable with it as it was, and we said to approve it, we will approve this if it is broken down into two-half credits.
That was very clear. It's in the minutes. It's in the minutes, because Rachel's the one who made sure that that was completely put into place, because she did not, she was, she was very adamant.
I didn't want to vote for it as a one-credit, and I think Mr. Brewer, who is unfortunately not a part of this as well, was also very concerned about it.
He was very vocal about it.
Yes, credit, because he wanted to make sure it was, it was split, the kids were taking them in two. The focus was going to be in two separate areas. Mr. Vogt was here, and I mean, he had made the comments as well, I mean, it was very... I mean, I know you're not...
Well, we'll start that in January.
I don't want to make a, a fuss to it. I just don't understand, because to say that it was board, you took the board directive, made the changes to a one-credit, you may have put rigor into it with the board directive. I don't remember saying make it a one-credit.
My understanding was the 0.5 was filed by the handing-in, and the second part of the year was the increased rigor for that part, but it's still the other one.
Yes.
With the total of one. Is that not what you're saying?
Yeah, that's not my understanding. I think we may be debating semantics, although, are you looking for a two-credit course?
We can watch the video, look on YouTube.
Was it same, you were looking at two courses, and maybe 0.5, so they was, is that what we're looking for out of two, instead of one?
Question. When we talk about this being two classes or one, is the focus really on the content of what is being taught?
Yes.
Okay, just want to clarify. So I, I have not read the original one, I have not read this one. So in it, would that be something that needs to be looked at, then? How the changes were made? What changes were made? Again, asking, I haven't...
There was, there's a beginning part that says that the increased rigor was in there, but truthfully, I did not do a side-by-side comparison to see exactly what the change in the rigor was.
Okay.
So I...
I mean, I look, I didn't, I didn't realize that that was the direction this was headed either, so I was more looking at it as, you know, we had kind of accepted that the, which I did see in the email, that some of the very concerning issues in Consumer Math was removed, and I thought that that was what we're doing this semester, and so the next semester, this is, you know, this is how this will follow up, in any type of, in a course that you would split like that. I'm trying to come up with another example, but I'm going to look far off-guard with all this.
Well, I'm, my question in that is because I, my expectation in offering this is that students will be taking both parts, because they need a math credit to graduate, so I'm not sure, in terms of half-credit, one-credit, if we have two half-credit classes, as long as, you know, you were saying, this content is good, but it's only half, so that if a revised course for one-credit, that enough is added to?
That was not the directive.
I know, I'm asking if that...
It kind of was, no, it was more, and I think it was unfortunate, because at that time, we lost our curriculum person, and there was not any other further questions.
Right.
I disagreed, and, and as well as a few other board members did, with what was in the curriculum for that course, but we were backed into a corner. We had to push it forward, so the meat in the middle was, okay, you know, that second half, like, let's, let's up this rigor, like, let's not let this just be a pass class, where they go in, like, whatever they're learning in the first half, they have to take that second half. They have to graduate, it's not a one-course. I understand it sounds like semantics, but it also sounds to me like, why was the semantics changed, when that was kind of more of the focus?
Well, what if students, sorry to interrupt, if it's two half-credit classes, students would get two different grades versus one overall grade for the class, so that is different when you figure GPA, I guess. So it's not semantics.
I look at it as motivational, I looked at it as just kind of, I don't know, that was the justification at that meeting for me and a few other board members to kind of say, okay, if we have to pass this, this is, okay, let's, let's change this, let's re-add this. I know that you were working with Mr. Vogt at the time, and then it just kind of fell to you along with everything else, so I guess I'm just, and I do say to Mr. Reese, because that was...
So, I mean...
I think he was here for the meeting and you were not, which is why the unfortunate, I think, of you not knowing what was stated, I think it was, he took a big hit.
I'm just going to point out two things along the way. The first thing I want to be clear about is that in the student schedule, as it currently stands, it is a half-credit as we were directed to be by the board through the board action, and that, I can show you the screen right here. It is definitely, that's the way it is as we speak. If you'll recall, there, what I would consider a ma, there was a major change that occurred in, we lost the teacher that originally wrote the curriculum, and the new teacher began, and the very first task the new teacher was given was to address this course, so that we had a solution moving forward. I can't speak to why it went to one course versus two courses. It might have been a loss in translation because of the change in personnel, might have been a misinterpretation. I can't answer that. What I can say is that that teacher took it upon himself. I even believe that the district he came from ran a similar course.
He wrote it for the district that he came from, and they have multiple high schools in the district where he worked, and he was the math department chair. And he was the math department chair and was able to bring the Consumer Math materials from that district. And then kind of marry it with some of our local resources and local, because they weren't using the same textbook. And they weren't, so he took his Consumer Math curricular materials, married them with some of the things that we do here, and had put into the original course and developed. This course that's presented to here.
I think what is in board docs lists.
Correct. What's, what's there today does not. I, I think what Mrs. Hassler is, is referring to is the possibility that when this course was originally presented, there was a textbook that accompanied it then. And to be honest with you, I, I just don't recall that.
It was a textbook initially, which is why I was very like, whoa with it. The textbook was, was quite, I mean, it had some very good parts. And I think that's where we looked at breaking it down, was being able to take some of those really good parts and taking that second semester and, and making the options. And I, and I think it's great that we have someone coming in with the experience. I think that that is wonderful. I just recall this being a very hot topic evening. And, and like I said, unfortunately, I don't think that Mr. Winger was here and I don't believe that Mrs. Hassler. Unfortunately, it was just Mr. Reese sitting on that side. So we did take the brunt of it and weren't able, you know, we were trying to get as much as we could. So I think just being a hot topic item, let's put this up for discussion so that I can read through that a little bit better. If this is going and keep in mind, it's a one-year at this point.
I mean, I'll take ownership to say that if this, what's in front of you is not what you intended, I apologize for that. It was probably up to me and I lost it in translation carrying it forward. But do understand that I believe this is coming to you with good faith effort to correct the problems that were addressed. So.
So let's just do this discussion so I have a little bit more time to kind of review a lot more of those changes if we can, I'm sure.
Are you saying just that particular course or are you saying just all four?
Well, the, the details, the ag that I want to get back from him, that could be, I mean, it will be a quick discussion just to kind of see where that's at. So.
I have a remaining question about Consumer Math.
Yeah.
When our students take the exams, are there Algebra II concepts on those exams on which are?
What, which exams? The Keystone's?
Any of them that our school is based on.
Yeah.
That, that people compare.
Sure. The state-required exams are up to Algebra I.
Oh, so Algebra II is not part of them?
Algebra II is not part of it.
I have a question about the Agricultural Six and Seven and Eight. Seems how they're all there. So what is the difference between the Six, the Seven, and the Eight? Because then they have to take an intro into Nine in order to even advance into through there. So what are they not doing, um, what are they not repeating in Nine that they haven't already had in Six, Seven, and Eight? Do you see what I mean?
Yeah. The progression as it's working this year is that we have the intro to Ag Six, which is occurring. And then Seven, Eight, and Nine are the same course. Same students are getting the same course material in Seven, Eight, and Nine. And if you'll recall back to what I said, you qualify for FFA starting in seventh grade. So their, their program now has the ability to start in seventh grade. So.
So is it the same course you're saying?
Yes, it's the same course.
So they could get credit each three years for the same material?
No, sir. They wouldn't take the course three years. They would take the course once and then that qualifies them to be able to move on through the next Ag courses.
But if they.
But if they take it in seventh grade, they have to wait till tenth grade to take something different?
So get in middle school, they have to wait till tenth grade to take something else.
Yeah, or January.
Or they wouldn't get the credit in, in seventh and eighth grade because they can't now take the ninth grade Ag. So those credits that they're taking in seventh and eighth grade do not count towards their graduation credit. So now they're already missing addition, like, the Ag stuff is not, it, it, you end up, you end up falling out. There's not enough Ag courses to take. So if you are saying Six is that intro piece and Seven, Eight, and Nine are the same course, but they.
Ten.
But they only get credit in ninth grade for that Ag course. So then if they take it in Seven and Eight, they're not getting the credit for Ag. So in essence, they would have to take the course over again to even get the Ag credit to end up with four credits for Math Four, the Ag that they can take. Because you can only take Ag, Small, Large, and Equestrian. There's only four.
Well, that's not.
There's only four big Ag ones. Not the Floriculture, not the, um, other, not, not the Aquaculture, not any of that other stuff. The four big ones that we are known for are the only ones you can take.
Okay. I, I'm not sure that I follow why you're not counting the other Ag courses as avail- i- if, if your, if your question is related to credit count. And there are other Ag courses available, why wouldn't they count?
Because some of those kids don't want to have to do anything with any of that other stuff. They're taking those Ag courses now because there's nothing else left. There's nothing else left for those Ag classes. There's not a secondary one for a large animal. There's only an Equestrian. There's not a secondary one for a small animal. There's not anything else. You're not offering anything else here. We don't, we don't have an ocean here. We have Floriculture and you can do those pieces and you can add those pieces in. But some of those kids are not into any of that. They're into the animals and what needs to go there. So you're not, we're not giving them any other options in animals. There's only four. So if they take it in eighth grade, they don't get a fourth credit in animals in Ag. They have to take a Floriculture. They have to take, I don't even know, Forestry.
To, to your point, I agree with what you're saying. The count is right and.
Right. But so you're, you're in essence taking the seventh and eighth graders who are now excited about taking Ag because they can take it that year. But they don't get that additional credit. So now they've got to figure out what else they're going to take in Ag.
Can I just, I'm sorry. Can I just table that question? Because I want to make sure that we get to our meeting at seven fifteen. And I also want to make sure that, um, and I, I, I think it's an important question, but I, I just want to, um, table it, um, for now so that we can come back to it. Because I want to make sure we cover the agenda. And I also want to make sure, because it's been up for discussion, that there is revision process for proposed courses. This is the process for that. Um, there is, um, a, a quite lengthy, um, process and steps to take as to what needs to be done for revision. Um, and approval of a course. So I'm going to, this is, yeah, this is new and this is.
It's, yeah, I can talk about it. It's, it's going to get further revised. I talked about January, moving forward through curriculum and course approval. That we're going to have a, I'm going to call for, like, a better term curriculum council. That along with board members, administrators, faculty. I think it's back to your question, uh, Mr. McCoy, what you were saying about the agricultural curriculum in general. It'll convert maybe expansion of course offerings. That's a greater discussion to have. And that's what this kind of, the council I'm talking about that I'll, will be presenting at future board meetings getting forward. You know, it's generally looking at everything we're offering students. I mean, that, that is a broader question and greater question you're answering. And I, I, I agree with Mr. Reese. I hear what you're saying. It's not a fixable thing we can do right here at this committee, but it's a, it's a good argument. It's a good thing we need to take a look at. So I have more information on that going forward when we talk about council and how this is going to be happening. This is in the works right now. There is a thorough process for course approval, multiple people, big teams of people, committee members sign off. So it's going through some kind of process right now. It's not ideal, but it's something that didn't exist before. So we have something that we're working on right now, but we're going to improve and get better with. So.
So this is the Northern Leffin School District process?
This is what we have happening right now because we had nothing that we could work off of before. So we have something in place right now.
So this is our process now?
It's our processing this right now. It's not going to be a final product.
Not, not the state and everything? Okay.
Thank you.
So are we, are we, did you guys decide what's being discussed and what's not being discussed? Because I don't think that was.
Well, I think table the egg thing for the time. We have five minutes. Are we done with our? I think all of it's going to be discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a huge thing, isn't it? Hold everybody else.
Not everyone does. No, they, they.
They might in January. Whole school's going to the street.
The school has, all the corruption, the lies, leasing. Kyle was one of the officers last year. The. FFA.
Coming in no more.
He quit. He failed. FFA has to pay for everyone if they don't pay the dues.
I got to go check on him.
If they pay the dues.
It's going to get cold. I don't think we got heating.
Cover it because it's already covered.
I'll take him some candles.
The people that don't, and there's a number that don't.
No.